Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 30th, 2017, it's nine o'clock. We're in the Senator Haring Room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for a weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our first item is always public comment.
We do have Ken Hetzel.
We do have somebody signed up. Ken Hetzel is here. You know the routine, Ken. Good morning.
For the record, my name is Kenneth Hetzel. I live at 745 Harris Street Southeast in the city of Salem in Marion County, Oregon. I come today to invite you to Hands Across the Bridge. It's the 11th celebration of recovery here in Marion County. For the last 10 years, Rock Recovery Outreach Community Center, of which I'm a board member, has put it on. This year, thanks to a grant by Marion County employee, Don Catrell, we've started what we call Marion-Pope Peer Coalition, MPPC, and that includes HOPE, which I think is Community Action Agency, Project Able, Rock Recovery Outreach Community Center, OFSN, Oregon Family Support Network, Mental Health America of Oregon was there, David Romprey Warmline was there. We have the Oregon State Hospital. And somebody told me that's the first time they've ever seen the Oregon State Hospital endorse or join any other group. We have a Toastmasters group at the Empowerment Center there now to train the patients to speak publicly. DDA, Oregon is Dual Diagnosis Anonymous, Hustle Hard for Recovery, Marion County Mental Health, and the VCN, and probably some that I've forgotten, but those are all members that work together in a loose coalition of peers. Peer is somebody that has a similar experience, whether it's gambling, drugs, mental health, child support, you know, it's all peers, mono to mono. Monday, I was at the City Council meeting, and Mayor Bennett proclaimed September as National Recovery Month here in Salem. And I'm sorry, we didn't ask y'all to do that, but we'll do that next year. I know y'all had planned to hire a drone to videotape the celebration, what we do. We visit with all the providers, and then at 5:00, we go up on the Marion Street Bridge, and we carry flowers to throw in the river in memory of the people that we've lost. And we're having trouble finding 50 dozen flowers. I'd gotten them before at Fred Meyer's, and I went to Fred Meyer's, and I'm going to tell on them. They refused, so I asked the florist. I said, "What can you do?" She said, "Well, we got to sell them to you at whatever price is marked. We can't give you a markdown or anything." And I said, "Well, on Friday, you rotate your stock, and you throw what's old from the week before out." She said, "I can't give those to you. I've got to throw them in the garbage, and I can't tell you which garbage can I put them in." So I contacted a wholesaler down in Springfield, was the only one I could get to give me a bid. I went to Pembroke and the wholesaler on Fairgrounds Road going out there off Monroe somewhere, and different people, and I couldn't get anybody to give me an estimate. So finally, out of Springfield, for half carnations and half roses, they gave us a bid of $495. And we don't have that money in our budget, and we had to order by last week, so that's out of the question. And I'm a master gardener, want to be, so I've contacted the master gardener, and we're trying to work with Oregon Gardens. I know y'all are proud of them. They have a lot of zinnias blooming now. Maybe they can give us some of the zinnias or some flowers. The master gardeners, you know, maybe we can go get a couple dozen roses out of the demonstration garden. We're working to get our flowers, or we may not be able to do that one event. So I just want to welcome y'all, encourage you to come. Normal people can come. You don't have to be in recovery. Let me talk about my recovery. I got sick in 1994. I had a mental health moment. We define the rest of our life with mental health moment. I'm a consumer survivor. I've been in the state hospital in Tennessee twice. I got out on good behavior. I went back to the very ward I was in to hold a NAMI group, National Alliance for the Mental Ill. I've led that for 20 something years in Memphis, Tennessee, and to take Little Debbie cookies and a two-liter Dr. Pepper and go to the patients and say, "When you get out, come here to our group at St. Francis Hospital, and we'll support you." We bridge that gap to give them a safe place to come to, and that's what I want to develop here in Salem and Marion County. So I've been out of the hospital 20 years. I use the email address Mental Health Consumer Number One because I've cost the system nothing, not a penny, in the last 20 years. And that's what I call recovery. You know, my groups, I led the groups, and I kept records, and nobody ever got better. You know, and I hope that, you know, I've hear that, you know, people here got better. David Romprey got better. Michael Lebacheck got better. And, you know, Corbett Monica's going at DDA. You know, they're all in recovery. And it's a different stage, you know? We have to have leaders. Yeah, I see myself as coming from Tennessee like Lewis and Clark did. You know, I'm a pathfinder. I go out and lead the way, and I can tell other people how to get there. So recovery is a step. I walk the tightrope every day. I lead a moderate life. I drink alcohol, you know, one beer a month, maybe. I don't smoke marijuana because it makes me go to sleep. If I wanted to go to sleep, I might smoke it. I don't do other drugs. And my drug of choice is sugar, caffeine, and salt. So that's me, and I want everybody to get better, whatever they want. It's a personal choice. You have to decide that you won't get better. The system can't make you do something. You can throw them in jail, you can throw them in mental health court. If they don't want to do it, they can't do it. You know, I wish I had somebody else here with me. At the City Council, we had four people come with me. That was a big increase. Next year, I hope to have 20 people here with me that are in recovery and are proud to say they're in recovery. When I moved here July 4th, I walked down the street to St. Paul's Church, and there was a group of men, and they said, "What is this?" He said, "We're having a group." And they wouldn't say anything. And I said, "Well, what kind of group?" He said, "AA." So I went to the AA meeting as part of the homeless shelter in Memphis, the Veterans Homeless Shelter. They made me go to AA even though I wasn't an alcoholic. And I went, and I knew the procedure, and there were 45 people there. The 4th of July, Saturday morning, 7:00, stood up and said, "I'm an alcoholic, and I want to be better." The next Tuesday, I went to Calvary Baptist Church, a block down the street, to the NAMI meeting, and there were two NAMI mommies. You know, I hate to use that word, but mothers that stood up and said, "I want my kids who have a mental illness to get better." You know, that's a shame that people are stigmatized, that they can't say, "I have a mental illness." That happened, you know, 20 years ago, and we're working on that. So one last thing in the paper today, Megan Lafferty. She strangled a puppy dog and was sentenced to three years in prison. She's a friend of mine. She's had a mental health moment. She's a client of Rock's, and I welcome her back when she gets out of prison. I want to be that bridge to help her reintegrate into society. Thank you. And that's why I wasn't going to cry.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Good luck with your project. All right, our next item then is the Consent Calendar. Commissioner Carlson.
Well, Mr. Chair, before we move the consent calendar, I'd like to move that we add an action item to our agenda. This would be to consider approval of an order authorizing a Level 1 evacuation notice for the Brighton Bush Hot Springs Resort area and authorizing a Level 2 evacuation notice if necessary. And we'll put that first up under Board of Commissioners. So that is my motion.
I'll second the motion. All right, it's been moved and seconded added item having to do with evacuation of the Brighton Bush area. Any further discussion? All right. I'm going to call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Chair, I'd move today's one consent item, and that's under the Clerk's Office to approve a contract for services with Eagle Newspapers, Inc., DBA Eagle Web Press for $200,000 to print and distribute voter information pamphlets.
I'll second the motion.
All right, let's move and second and approve the consent item this morning. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. So we'll start in the action, and we'll start, Ed Flick, with the first, the Brighton Bush evacuation. Just a little background, I was on the phone with Ed last night, and he was starting to suggest we take this action under our streamlined method in Marion County. I think I could have, well, I know I could have just initiated it, but I thought with a meeting this morning, a good opportunity for all of us to hear what's going on in the public and kind of get an idea where we are. And while we've got Ed, a little description perhaps of other fears and concerns here in Marion County. So go ahead, Ed, and Scott Norris.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. For the record, I'm Ed Flick and the Marion County Emergency Manager.
And I'm Scott Norris with the Office of Legal Counsel.
As the Boards are aware, there's been a number of wildland fires burning in eastern Marion County since mid-July. Most significant of those has been the Whitewater Fire, which fortunately has been parked for a number of weeks with reasonable lines of containment, not threatening property or, well, structures or people, still with some private timber property threatened. Another fire was started by lightning about two weeks ago called the Little Devil Fire, which has been burning southeast of the small community of Brighton Bush and is also not moving forward towards Brighton Bush. Because of these fire activities, we've been engaging with the communities there with Brighton Bush and also with Detroit and Idana for the last several weeks, talking about what would happen in the unlikely event that fire did threaten one of those communities. And key to that education has been conveying to those communities this idea of ready, set, go, which is the way that the State of Oregon approaches notifying the public of the need to evacuate. Two days ago, a fire started to the west of the Brighton Bush Village, approximately two and a half miles and in close proximity to Forest Road 46. You've got a graphic in front of you which shows the approximate location of that fire now named Scorpion because it's in the Scorpion Drainage. The night before last, the Fire Defense Board Chief and I went up to the Detroit Ranger Station, had a meeting with the forest, and looked at what that fire may be doing, and established an initial understanding that the fire was generally burning north but was also threatening Forest Road 46. Based on its proximity to the west of Brighton Bush, we recognized the need to develop what we call mission action points that would help to inform decision-making for evacuation of the Brighton Bush region if that became necessary. Yesterday, the Fire Defense Board Chief, the Office of the State Farm Marshal, myself, met with the incident management team managing the Whitewater Fire, which has now delegated responsibility for the Scorpion Fire, and also met subsequently with the Brighton Bush Corporation and subsequently with the Mayor of Detroit. And it was the consensus of our group that it was appropriate at this time to request the Board to consider issuing a Level 1 evacuation notification to the area in the vicinity of Brighton Bush to include those portions of the White Mountain National Forest to the north of the Highway 46. The second graphic in your packet includes the shaded area, which would be the actual area of notification. And I want to highlight here that this fire in no way threatens the cities of Detroit or Idana, and that Detroit is still very much open, and I hope they have a great Labor Day celebration.
Smoke.
You'll note on the graphic that Forest Road 46 is closed. That is a closure that was put in place yesterday afternoon, and we expect this morning that that will be reopened with a pilot car, which will allow people to get to Brighton Bush and also allow the transportation of through hikers on the Pacific Crest Trail to bypass the Whitewater Fire and continue their journey to the north or south. The National Forest Service has decided not to close campgrounds in the immediate vicinity, making the importance of this Level 1 evacuation notification important to ensure that all of the people in that area are equally aware of the potential for escalating fire activity. The next pieces in your packet are sample notifications of a Level 1, a Level 2, and a Level 3. Level 1 and Level 2 are notifications, and Level 3 is an evacuation order to leave. A representative from the Red Cross described in probably the best terms that I've heard what it really means to be ready, set, and go. Ready is if you have a cat, find your cat and find the cat carrier. Level 2 would be to put the cat in the carrier, and Level 3 is, of course, to take the cat out of the area. So this is not intended to frighten, it's intended to inform so people can make reasonable decisions. The community of Brighton Bush is fully supportive of Level 1. In fact, based on the engagement that the Sheriff's Office and I've had with them over the last several weeks for all intent purposes, they're at Level 1 now. Looking forward, fire behavior is likely to increase over the weekend with temperatures getting back up in the high 90s and relative humidity going low again. The fire did make, the fire crews made significant progress on Scorpion yesterday but were hindered by the smoke coverage and the lack of availability of a Type 1 helicopter due to mechanical I would emphasize that the fire crew this morning does not assess that Forest Road 46 is threatened at this time, but it does necessitate the use of the pilot car. At this point, I'll pause for any questions.
Are there? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ed, thank you. We thought you'd get a little break after the eclipse, but it sounds like you've been busy 24/7. Really appreciate all the updates that you give us and the Sheriff's Department as well on what's going on up there. Just a couple of questions on the map. It's hard for me to understand the road numbers and just to clarify, maybe to put those road numbers. I'm looking at the first map you discussed, the Brighton Bush Area Evacuation Map, but this one doesn't have the big pink thing on it. There's a blue, almost looks like a railroad track. What is that? Is that a trail?
No, Commissioner. The road, that blue track is actually Forest Road 46. So what this map highlights is, in the event that the Scorpion Fire did force a closure of Forest Road 46 in the vicinity of Milepost 7, that we would need to evacuate to the east and north up towards Estacada. At this time, we would consider that to be our alternate evacuation route and still assess that evacuating, if necessary, would take place using Forest Road 46 back in the direction of Detroit.
So just so I understand, I see the hot springs there. Is that the resort?
That is the resort.
Okay, so if I go to the left, if I go to my left on that map where it's red, it's closed, but that would be the evacuation route back to Detroit?
It's closed currently. It's going to open when a pilot car is available to move traffic back and forth. So the decision if we went to a Level 3 would depend on the status of 46. If 46 is open, our preference is to evac towards Detroit. Otherwise, we'd have to go towards Estacada.
Yeah, I understand. I understand all that. I'm just saying, is the red line, is that back towards Detroit?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay, I just want to try to orient myself on this map. I see north, but, you know, I'm one of those people who said, my parents used to have to tell me the other left. Okay, so will this be posted? Will people know with the Level 1, Level 2? Will they have this information there to know which way they're going to be going? Or is that come out at Level 3?
At Level 1, what we intend to do is show the area affected by the alert notification with emphasis that it doesn't include Detroit. Really, it starts about Milepost 4 on 46, and we'll have identified possible evacuation routes. We're working with the Forest Service now to get a cleaner map of that exact location that would then be released through public information.
Okay, and so what I do understand is the Scorpion Fire is between Detroit and the hot springs on 46, right there? It's almost touching 46?
That's correct. It's just to the east of the Fox Creek Group Site, and then in that drainage, really oriented north-south, approximately, well, between Milepost 7 and Milepost 8 and north of Forest Road 46.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, just a little discussion, Ed, about what the procedures go for this Board. Do we initiate 1 and 2? You've kind of authorized at least 3. Something to be addressed yet, and then how does it terminate? So if you can just go through that, then we'll call the question, I hope.
So in consultation with Scott Norris, this will authorize 1 and 2 if necessary. I'd have a discussion with the Emergency Management Board Designee should 2 be necessary. 3 would require subsequent Board action in accordance with the code. At that time, when we're in 3, and we expect this to be, if necessary, a very orderly withdraw, given the preparation that Brighton Bush has made, we would keep the area closed up until that time that we assessed it was safe to return in close consultation with the community and the National Forest Service. And then we would resend the Level 3 order, coming back to the Board Designee.
Okay. All right. So if you're ready, I think it's probably there.
Well, that's the heading right there, so you can just say it right.
Either way.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we authorize a Level 1 evacuation notice for the Brighton Bush Hot Springs Resort area and authorizing a Level 2 evacuation notice if necessary.
And I'll second the motion, clarifying that we're approving an order to do that.
All right, let's move and second to approve an order that initiates 1 and 2 evacuation of the Brighton Bush area. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Anything, Ed? Okay, call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Ed, for being able to come in here as organized as we can be, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Our first action item then, under the normal schedule, was consider approval of Marion County's 2017 Justice Reinvestment Grant Program application and sign the letter of support. Commissioner Carlson, Sheriff Jason Myers. Says Commander Jeff Wood. There you are.
Good morning. Is only copy.
So we haven't practiced this. In fact, we just got the grant application done very late yesterday afternoon. So I'm going to start, and then I'm going to turn it over, and they're going to fill in whatever I left out and whatever else they want to say. So before you, you have a very large grant application to the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Justice Reinvestment Funds. The Justice Reinvestment, as we have discussed many times before, has, is a program that was developed, actually is a policy and an approach that was approved by the legislature several years ago, when Commissioner Cameron was there, I believe. And the direction, the policy direction is for nonviolent property and drug crimes, kind of a set of crimes that Jeff and Jason may want to talk about. We are looking to divert people from prison, and Oregon's goal is to not have to build another prison. I think over time, with the success of the program, they've actually created other goals too as well, and the idea that public safety increases, that maybe prison isn't the best place for these folks, that they do better in the community. All of those things are part of that policy. So Marion County started out, and you can see the, it's in the report and also on the slide up on the screen, that out of the metro counties, we had a very high baseline and even a higher monthly bed days in comparison when we started this process back in 2014-15. And so we had quite a ways to go through the good work of the programs that have been funded for the past several years. And this is really collaboration between the Marion County Sheriff's Office, particularly Community Corrections, but I think also we can say law enforcement and the institutions, and also the District Attorney's Office, and we have a number of nonprofits, Schumacher Community College, many other partners working with us. We have had the best, I guess I can say, progress of reducing the number of bed days in prison of any of the counties. So we're doing very, very well. It's a success story. What we're looking at today, two years ago, we approved a plan that was about $3.5 million to a set of services. This biennium, the dollars that we're receiving are a little higher, 3.7 million, but these dollars are not solely the dollars that fund these programs. We blend and braid funding. The fund that's called the 180 Fund, which is a baseline funding source, is much, much larger. It is 14, 12.5 million, sorry, 12.5 million for the biennium. So you compare 12.5 million with 3.7 million, and you can see that that's the lion's share of what we get for parole and probation services. But what's interesting is that the baseline formula is based on our workload, the number of folks that we have, where Justice Reinvestment as a formula grant, really, they're looking at the outcomes and the success that we have in the program. And then we will talk briefly about another, I believe it's $7 million statewide that's available as a supplemental grant. You have at your place a couple of spreadsheets that I'm not going to put on the screen, and we went through these at Community Corrections Board, but they've been updated a little bit. So these ones that have the red on the top for Year 1 and Year 2 show the various funding sources and how they work together to fund the set of programs that have allowed us to see the success that we have. The process that we used to develop this plan, a couple of years ago, the Public Safety Coordinating Council went through quite an extensive process. We spent a good 13 months with in-depth presentations at council meetings, and then we had the steering committee, well, actually, we took a look at the programs that had been started under the kind of the preliminary Justice Reinvestment Program before the plan was developed, also took a look at other programs that could support that, had the steering committee go through almost a request for proposals process. had the steering committee go through almost a request for proposals process, kind of a smaller version of that, where we scored proposals and talked about the value of programs, and then came up with the slate that you see in the third column of numbers, which was the 2015-17 allocation. Those programs have, as we saw with our statistics, been very successful. The issue that we ran into this time, first of all, is that we didn't go through the in-depth presentations because we felt like we'd kind of built a foundation with the Public Safety Council on what we were doing. But we based our initial proposal on an estimate, since the legislature hadn't come through with final numbers, even into, I think, June. We were, July, we were still waiting for a final number for what Marion County would receive. Once we got that final number, which I think we got the day before the Public Safety Coordinating Council when we approved it, we discovered that it was slightly lower than what we had anticipated, so we had to make some adjustments. The adjustments were contingent on getting the larger grant number, that baseline number that I talked about, or the 180 Fund number, which we thought we would get days after the meeting, and instead, we got it weeks after the meeting. So once we got that number, because both of them have to work together, we discovered, Sheriff's Office discovered, that there were a couple other funding sources that they relied on in this constellation of funding sources that either had been reduced or eliminated. So even though it looks like we received more money just in this one funding stream because of the reductions in other funding streams, we had to make some cuts in the programs, and that was a difficult thing to do. The 2 that you'll see on this chart where cuts were made, the Marion County Adult Drug Court, which received $40,000 in the last biennium, was slated to receive 20 this biennium. So they'll be funded in the first year and then need to find another funding source. And they're going to use that money flexibly across their various specialty courts. And then the Family Support Program that is operated by Family Building Blocks has some unspent funds, $12,268 to be exact, that they will be able to use in this current year. We think it would take them probably up until December, and then there will no longer be funds available from this funding source for them to continue that program. You can see that other programs, and I'll go through the percentages, have, some of them received more, some of them received maybe a little bit less. Part of the, the interesting part about this is that we had other funding sources, for example, for LinkUp in the prior biennium, a federal grant that we had about $150,000 left over. So when that finished up, the full load of that program went on to other funding sources like Justice Reinvestment. And so it's not really a clean increase all the way across the various programs. And I'll show you a spreadsheet that describes those percentages in a minute. So the process anyway was that the steering committee looked at some estimates, made a recommendation. The Public Safety Council approved the recommendation with some slide adjustments and delegated authority to the steering committee to go back, once we got the final numbers, and make some adjustments. When we came back as a steering committee, we still didn't have full information on the supplemental grant, and knowing that we had some budget holes, the steering committee approved a couple options, Scenario 1 and Scenario 2. So if we went after the supplemental grant, we would do Scenario 2. If not, we would do Scenario 1. We had a meeting last Wednesday with representatives from the Criminal Justice Commission. While, of course, they cannot tell us for sure whether or not we would have the grant, they encouraged us to apply and thought that we had a strong track record and felt like our grant would be competitive. So we are going to apply for the supplemental grant, which means that we're doing Scenario 2. So the document that you have in front of you, this large document, has an executive summary at the front of it. The executive summary will not be submitted to the Criminal Justice Commission. This is just for the presentation document that we have for the public, and the Public Safety Coordinating Council will ratify this on September 12. The rosters of the Public Safety Council, and we now have changed our Marion County Reentry Council to be our Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council, and they're overseeing this broader work, giving advice to the Sheriff's Office. And then, starting on page 27 where it shows cover sheet and all the way back through the end of the document, this is what will be actually submitted to the Criminal Justice Commission. And Hitesh Parek, who is in the room, who deserves a great deal of thanks for helping put this together, will be copying and pasting the information that's in each box into an online application form. It just happens to be due tomorrow by the end of the day. So he's waiting for our approval here, and then he will diligently start working to get into that online application form and get this data in and submitted. The other thing that you'll see in the very, very back of the document, well, there's a signature page that I believe I will have to sign as the Chair of the Public Safety Council, and on page 143 is a letter that is required this time around from the Board of Commissioners. And so you'll see that this is a draft letter that has not yet been signed. Upon board approval, we will sign this letter today. Christie has a copy of it. And then Hitesh will be able to upload that signed letter and include it with our application that is due tomorrow. So let me just show one more slide here. Oops. So this is the spreadsheet that shows the amounts that were allocated to the programs in the biennium that we just concluded, 2015-17. The amount of unspent funds for each of the programs, which will be then allocated to the first, we'll spend that first in this current biennium and then move into the grant that we're approving now. The allocations by year for '17, '18, and '18-'19. And then you can see the percentages. Trying to see here. Thought we had the percentages for both. No, I'm not seeing that. Well, Hitesh actually has a version of this where the percent, it shows the percentages both here and the percentages with the unspent funds. But it is, that version, I think, is in front of you. Yes. All right, so the version on the screen is not the version that you have in front of you. So just for the listening public, the percentage difference with the unspent funds is about an 11.8% increase over the last biennium for the upper-level services, the direct services. And then adding in the victim services and the statewide evaluation is about 10.5%. So finally, what I'd like to say is thanks again to Hitesh, also to Gail Dick from the Sheriff's Office, who really crunched the numbers and was so cheerful in helping, especially yesterday as we pulled it together, the members of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, and especially the steering committee that spent a couple of meetings really digging through the information and trying to understand it. We did base these decisions very much on past performance, the numbers of clients that we're able to serve, the level of risk of those clients, and whether or not we were targeting our funds on those programs that were going to have the greatest results. So again, the action that you will take today would be to approve this application and to approve signing the Board of Commissioners letter. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the record. Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. As usual, Commissioner Carlson did a really great job of covering everything. The only thing I'd add in the thanks realm is thanks to Commissioner Carlson and her leadership and organizational skills, because this is the third time we've gone through the process of evaluating our programs and then determining, based on the dollars that we receive for Justice Reinvestment and the other funding streams, where those dollars are best suited. And I think this process went very smoothly, considering we had to make some tough choices. The other thing I would add is that I have a lot of confidence in the programs that we have here in our local community. And while we're assisting the state in curbing prison growth and reinvesting those dollars that we would have spent in prison into local programs, our local programs are turning out really good numbers, really good return on investment in terms of reducing recidivism and keeping our community safe. So it's a collaborative effort, as you heard. It takes not only the Sheriff's Office, it takes the Board of Commissioners, the District Attorney, the Health Department, we all work together to change behavior and make our community a safer place. So you should be proud of the work that's going on with all of the different organizations within the county. Commander Wood?
As the sheriff said, thanks for your time, Commissioners. And for the record, Jeff Wood, Marion County Sheriff's Office, and the Proel and Probation Division Commander. I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with our private nonprofits, Board of Commissioners, on these programs over the last six years. What I will add is, this is a very comprehensive plan. It's a very well-thought-out plan. We obviously use an array of funding streams to facilitate these programs. But I think what I like most about this plan and our plans in general, is the sheriff and Commissioner said, these programs are evidence-based. They have been statistically proven to reduce the likelihood of recidivism or criminal activity, whether you use an old definition of new felony conviction or you use the new definition of new misdemeanor felony arrests, new misdemeanor felony conviction, or new incarceration. No matter how you look at it, these programs work. Whether you have a mental health issue and an addiction issue coming out of DOC, whether you need just some housing resources because you're experiencing homelessness at the moment, or you're a nonviolent drug and property offender who historically has gone to prison, we now have services available for a variety of different populations. I'd say almost every type of population that you could come across. You hear us talk about addressing criminogenic risk factors, those factors most likely to correlate to new criminal activity. These programs address them, and they do them very, very well. Again, we have a wonderful collaborative effort in Marion County. Again, I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, thank Commissioner Carlson for all her hard work, the sheriff and undersheriff for their unyielding support, and really say this is a very good plan, a well-thought-out plan. And I think, yes, it does reduce the likely, or reduce our prison population significantly, as you can see by the chart. But I'd say, most importantly, it keeps our community safe. It facilitates the reformative process, and it's just simply good public policy. Thank you.
Thanks, and I realized I didn't get back to the supplemental grant. So on the red spreadsheets that you have, we actually show the hole that we have in the Senate Bill 416 program, which is probably the program that has had the most influence in moving the dial on those prison diversions that you saw in the earlier slide. And so we'll be looking to fill the gap at roughly $178,000 that we will need to apply for the Criminal Justice Commission to fill that hole. If we are unsuccessful in the grant, then we will be back here and to the Public Safety Coordinating Council to reshuffle the numbers because that hole has to be filled with Senate Bill 416. But because of the discussion we had, as I mentioned, with the Criminal Justice Commission that last week, and we feel fairly confident that it will be well-received, we're going to go this direction and hope that we'll be able to fill the hole with a portion of that $7 million that the legislature allocated for supplemental grants. They can, the supplemental program can only be for positions for downward diversion programs. So the choice of which program to select, to present to them, is very narrow. That is our downward diversion program. So even though that is our most important program, and generally, if you're prioritizing, you would put your eggs in the basket of maybe your less significant program to move forward, this is the direction that we need to go. So we'll entertain any questions that you have, and appreciate your attention.
Well, I think you were trying to answer what I was concerned about, or you did, that there's some supplemental, but it still says a gap, and the number didn't match. I'm looking at $740,000 less than what you had or wanted. I don't know which.
Right.
And you're talking about a potential $150,000 fillback. Well, that doesn't add up. So there's 2 that I spot, that transition service housing, maybe we don't need some stuff there, but it's just like a 75% cut, if I'm seeing it. And then the one that I am really, I'm sorry I sound like that, but I'm really concerned about parole and probation, cuts there when we're relying on them more and more. So tell me how you're going to beef those up, make those up. Maybe that's what you were getting at. I'm not sure.
Well, I'm going to let Jeff talk about parole and probation, because that is a real issue. Each time that we've done this, well, this is the second time, what we do is we create a budget that says if we had everything we needed to do, everything we wanted, this is the amount of money that we would have. So for some of these, if you look at the transition services and housing, which we initially did cut down to the core, but were able to, oh, this is not, this is not the right version of the spreadsheet. I'm going to actually go, and I deleted that slide. I'm going to put that away because that's an earlier version of the spreadsheet. I apologize. Transition services housing is actually a 95.6% increase from where it was last biennium, funded by this funding stream. But again, there are several funding streams that go together. So the 400, where is it?
319, maybe?
Right. We were not able to achieve that last biennium either. So certainly, there would be more housing that we could use, but I think that at the level that we have it now, it is improved from where we were talking about having it, and it's an increase from where we were last time with Justice Reinvestment money. Substance abuse treatment, the amount that is down in Justice Reinvestment actually is being made up with the 180 Fund. So I think that that was whole. The Diminus Resource Center got a significant increase and had actually asked for a larger increase, but we're giving them a, kind of a mid-level increase from what they had asked for in the past. So I think, for the most part, the $740,000 that we're talking about is a gap where we're saying that they would be things that we could use. We certainly would want to have them. But I think our programs will continue to work well with the dollars that we're allocating. I think there is a concern around parole and probation. There are a couple of parole officers that are, that Commander Wood is going to have to do without in this next year, and he is concerned about that, so let him talk about that.
Commissioner, in response to your question, I think Commissioner Carlson highlighted a little bit. In terms of some of the funding, the baseline funding, Community Corrections funding that we receive through the state, there were some funding sources, one in particular, that were either reduced or eliminated. Probably the one that's the easiest to mention is our, and I think we may have mentioned this before, is our Alternative to Incarceration Program, AIP funding. That was literally eliminated in some of the last days of legislative session. Off the top of my head, I think, generally speaking, that's about $100,000 that we usually get in reimbursements from the Department of Corrections. And so we've had to scramble a bit to address that population. The treatment piece is one of the easier ones because we can work with Bridgeway Recovery Services, our main drug and alcohol treatment provider, and they're able, they have been able so far to address that within people who are signed up with the Oregon Health Plan. The subsidy housing piece was probably one area that we relied significantly on for that population, which we are going to have to kind of shift within what we have available. Commissioner Carlson's absolutely right in terms of the monies, even though it shows a deficit, it is technically significantly more money than we've had historically and within, previous to this last Justice Reinvestment funding that we had. But in terms of baseline funding, we're, through the elimination of the AIP, Alternative to Incarceration Program funding, our FSAP family, Family Sentencing Alternative Program, forgive, I can't even remember my own acronyms, and then our Measure 57 funding. Although those funding sources have gone up a little bit, they don't cover our personnel costs. Additionally, when we do our budget in February, we have to guesstimate what our allocation percentage is going to be. We don't have, unfortunately, the robust staff that the Department of Corrections has. You're stuck with me to figure out what that funding formula might be. And admittedly, it's a little bit reading tea leaves. I believe we calculated our allocation to be about 9.6 in this current biennium. It's 9.42. So although Community Corrections funding went up, our allocation actually was a little lower than we budgeted for. So it's a little less money than we budgeted for during the last process. So with those decreases, because of the allocation in Family Sentencing, Measure 57, and baseline, there are some tough decisions to make. Candidly, personnel costs, some of the treatment costs covering the Bridgeway Recovery Services costs, there are some vacancies that we're going to have to leave open because, candidly, we just don't have money for them. we just don't have money for them. Ideally, there'll be some opportunities that we might be able to apply for to bring some of these positions back. But, I know Commissioner Brantano has brought up caseload size frequently, knowing that workload is significantly, significant, something we need to keep in consideration. So, I'll end with this. Our caseload numbers overall had reached a high about 10 years ago of about 4,400. Candidly, because of some of the good work that we've been doing, we keep reducing those overall numbers. We've gone from 4,400 to 3,600, and our last count is about 3,200. And talking to the Sheriff and UnderSheriff, one of the questions we need to ask is, do we have the ability to keep those positions funded, knowing that our work share might be decreasing, historically has been decreasing? So, those are some of the things that we're going to keep in mind, and potentially those positions may not be filled, but the one thing I do want to end with is, our average caseload size, that average workload per caseload carrying probation officer, is at 50, and that is one of the lowest caseload ratios that we've had as long as I can remember. So, we are trying to maintain that caseload, that workload, as reasonable as possible, even considering some of these reductions that we've been having to deal with.
You know, I hear you, and I get it, but you're also concentrating, you're getting down to the harder cases, and that implies more work, concern, scrutiny. I should have started this out. I want to thank you all for the amount of work and thought. These couple things just jumped at me. Is no way a complaint or criticism of the work you've done? Any questions?
Just to say thank you, and I know this is, this program is 2013, I think we passed it in the Legislature, and I want to compliment the Legislature for at least continuing to have some institutional memory. I know we have to go over and remind them quite often about this, as there's turnover, but Jeff, I guess the question is, is the real dollars that you got cut, that come from DOC funding? Is that, just to clarify?
For the AIP, that is.
Yeah.
DOC, through legislative allocation, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, Commissioner Carlson, you'd like to make a remote motion, perhaps?
I would, and I probably need to, we would be, what's the word I'm looking for? Anyway, we need to thank Senator Jackie Winters, too, who chaired the Public Safety Subcommittee of Ways and Means. When the Governor's Budget came out, these funding sources were significantly below current service level, and through a lot of work through the Association of Orion Counties, a number of county partners, and other people that came to the Legislature, Senator Winters was able to reallocate the Governor's Budget, and where we are at today, we'd be in a lot worse position if these funding streams had gone down as well. So, with that, I want to, I would move approval of Marion County's 2017 Justice Reinvestment Grant Program application, and authorize the Board to sign a letter of support.
I'll second the motion.
I ask to move and second it to approve Marion County's 2017 Justice Reinvestment Grant application. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, again, thank you all. All right, our next item's under Business Services. We consider approval of a public improvement agreement with Hydrotemp Mechanical Incorporated for $1,074,400 to replace the existing HVAC system at the Transition Center. Colleen Kuns Chafens, good morning, go ahead.
We're the Sheriff and Commissioner's Office, Business Services Director.
Kevin Burton, Congressional Project Coordinator.
Today, we're here to ask your consideration to approve the public improvement agreement with Hydrotemp Mechanical for $1,074,400 to replace the HVAC system at the Transition Center. I'd like to provide you some history. So, for many years, the Transition Center building has had ongoing HVAC issues, heating, ventilation, air conditioning issues. A project was initiated back in 2009, an investigation by several engineering firms were performed. Due to ongoing issues with the building systems, this project did not take shape until 2014, and looked at again when I came onboard in 2015. I halted the project so we could review what was or wasn't done, and if we could look at the building in totality. For the HVAC side, the designed ground loop HVAC system is at the end of its useful life, and a new system needs to be installed. Through a thorough forensic investigation, it's been established that the HVAC and roofing system both had played a part in these issues. There are limited areas of an actual vapor barrier between framing structure and insulation. The roof deck penetration and a plenum-style common airspace is causing condensation issues by allowing warm air and moisture to transfer into the cold insulation material. In layman's terms, we're getting a lot of condensation from the HVAC system and not properly venting through the roof. What's happening is there's more or less a pipeline or a conduit where that condensation is coming down into our electrical systems, and we do see water in the interior of the building. This project will be performed jointly with our project coordinator, Kevin, and our HVAC consultants and our contractors, who are Hydrotemp. So, Brian is our project manager from Hydrotemp, and Gabe is here as the superintendent from Hydrotemp, and they'll be working with the Sheriff's Office, as well as Spearhead Roofing, who will help us to get the roofing part of that done, which we'll talk about in the next contract. So, as the project gets underway, the logistics is an ongoing conversation with the Sheriff's Office and Command Staff to ensure operational needs are being met. Due to the open plenum nature of the building, this contract, we added some scope, and I wanted to just mention that to you. The initial scope really was just to go in and see what was wrong and replace a VRF system. It's a refrigerant-type recovery system. In this scope, we decided to include a ducted system, because in the open plenum, the whole attic is open for all the air just to go up. We're going to duck the system so that doesn't happen. That's what was causing some of the condensation. Also, we're going to replace a new boiler that replaces the 80-gallon domestic water tank, which would be more efficient for the Sheriff's, it should save us on some utility costs, as well as some water costs. We received two bids on this project, and Hydrotemp was awarded through a thorough evaluation and discussion. And Kevin, if you have anything to add, you could add.
I'm sure that Commander Ladd can vouch for the fact that there's a lot of temperature fluctuations, there's been a lot of repairs to the existing system, and then, with an open plenum design, you use the same air that's in the building, and you basically recirculate it through the building. So, with a ducted system, now you're bringing in fresh air, and you're getting air exchanges in the building. That helps bring the old moisture out and bring fresh air from the outside in. So, that helps air quality inside the building as well. And that's about all I got to add, unless you guys have any questions for me?
Questions? I do have one. I'm wondering how operations, when are you going to do this, and how will you maintain operations during it?
We have our pre-construction meeting on Friday with our teams, where the Sheriff's Office is involved in that. Lieutenant Larson, as well as Commander Ladd, are involved in that conversation and their teams to discuss how the logistics from having to move inmates around the building so that we're not impacting that.
You'll do it sectionally, then, is that how you'll?
Correct, sir.
Probably, okay. All right.
Yeah, we've worked on coordination, a lot of the work release, when the prisoners are out of their cells, a lot of the work will be taking place at that time, and then it'll be wrapped up by the time they come back. It will have some impact on the CDO side, because those operations will remain intact while we are performing the project, but it is sectionally, so, and a lot of those guys are in and out of, in the field a lot, so we'll take advantage of their schedules and work around that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Kevin, just CDO, Command?
Central District Office.
Okay, which we're building a new one, but this is the, where they're at.
Correct, that's where the administrative operational piece.
Right. And just to clarify, this is, this building's going to be continued to use even after they move out for further operations.
Correct.
And we've got a plan for that. So, this is an investment that goes along with the other investments we're making out on that campus that's important.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, if you're ready?
Mm-hmm.
Consider, I would move that we approve a public improvement agreement with Hydrotemp Mechanical, Inc., for $1,074,400 to replace the existing HVAC system at the Transition Center.
I'll second the motion.
I ask to move and second it to replace the, to approve the agreement to replace the existing HVAC system at Transition Center. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right, thank you. Next item, I assume, Colleen, you're still here, is the aforementioned approval of public improvement agreement with Spearhead Roofing Incorporated for $828,734 for the roofing project at the Transition Center.
Good morning. Colleen Kuns Chafens, Business Services Director, and Kevin Burton, our project coordinator. Today, we're here to ask your consideration to approve the public improvement agreement with Spearhead Roofing for $828,734 for the roofing project at the Transition Center. The building roof was renovated in 2008, 2009, as part of an energy efficiency building upgrade. We've had water in the interior spaces near the slope roof. Again, a thorough forensic investigation analysis was performed. Some of the issues that came to surface were, there was no vapor barrier seeing in the majority of the roof, it was kind of pieced. Roof decking was not all nailed down. Some of the roof decking was nailed down with screw, with sheet metal screws as opposed to nails. Insulation was placed haphazardly throughout, allowing water into the conduits. We do need more insulation and underlayment and the correct fasteners, and so, all of that is part of what was underneath the standing seam metal roof. We are recommending, keeping a standing seam metal roof, and along with the HVAC system that's been recommended, this will fix the two major issues at the facility. And we should wrap this up prior to winter beginning, so we shouldn't see any condensation in the building. Both contractors, Hydrotemp and Spearhead, are working in coordination with Kevin. They have weekly meetings to discuss coordination with the Sheriff's Office regarding the logistics of the campus, also laying out for when the new building begins, the new Sheriff's Office begins, that they'll be staged at different places on campus, so we'll really have two major projects going on there at the same time. So, we're here to ask for your approval for this contract.
Questions or comments?
I have any questions?
Colleen, I have one, and I'm sorry, I should know this, too, but did we do attempt any recovery, or anything on the previous roofing?
We did. I met with legal counsel, Bruce Armstrong and I, had several conversations. Gloria and I and Bruce had several conversations to discuss how to talk with McKinstry. McKinstry, at the point when we started talking with them, they were actually not licensed in the state of Oregon, because they lost their license. And then, they had to come back and get it again, and then, I went and met with McKinstry trying to see if we could toll the agreement, which was recommended by our counsel. They were not willing to do that without the subcontractors doing the same thing, the subcontractor said no. So, we decided not to pursue an agreement, because we were considering that they could fix what was broken, what they didn't manage in the first place, and so, that's where we're going back to making sure, this is Kevin's role, this is Larry's role, to ensure that these projects are managed properly.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
So, you ready for a motion?
Please.
Okay, so, I would move approval of the public improvement agreement with Spearhead Roofing, Inc., for $828,734 for the roofing project at the Transition Center.
I'll second the motion.
I ask to move and second to approve the public improvement agreement with Spearhead Roofing for the project, the Transition Center roofing project. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
The final item this morning is under the Sheriff's Office. We consider approval of an agreement with the United States Bureau of Indian Education in the amount of $457,000 to provide law enforcement services through the Sheriff's Office and detention services through the Juvenile Department at Shamala Indian School. Commander Eric Ladd and our Sheriff, Jason, good morning.
Morning again, Commissioners. For the record, Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. You have before you an agreement with the United States Bureau of Indian Education and Affairs. We, this has to do with a law and service, law enforcement service contract that we have with the Shamala Indian School. I'm going to just give a little background and then turn it over to Commander Ladd, but this has been a contract and a relationship we've had with the Shamala Indian School since September of 2005, so it's been a longstanding contract, and as you might recall, in 2005, the school encountered a tragedy involving one of the students and their security department, and they looked to us to contract for law enforcement and security on the campus. And since that time, we started with just the contract with the Sheriff's Office, we've expanded to add additional services to the school through the Juvenile Department. It's been a great collaboration between the school, Juvenile Department, and our office, and we've seen tremendous outcomes in terms of the educational setting that is now at the school versus where it was at in 2005. So, with that, I will turn it over to Commander Ladd for the specifics.
Thank you, Commissioners, again, for the record. My name is Eric Ladd. I'm the Enforcement Division Commander for the Marion County Sheriff's Office, here this morning to discuss the Shamala Indian School and the residential program. So, as you may well know, our deputies have been out there since 2005, and they provide school resource services for the high school for about 300 students. In addition, they provide services to the residential program, which is the dormitories for those same 300 students who are out here for the school year. Those students come to us from as far away as Minnesota and Wisconsin, and as far south as Arizona, so it makes it a unique experience. Again, those kids are, those children are about 14-years-old when they come to us, so we have some very young students coming from a long way away, and our deputies are here to sort of help them make that transition. Since 2005, our deputies have assisted in a number of ways in the school, so our deputies have coached football, they've coached basketball, and they've coached baseball. They've been able to go on recreational trips with the students, boating and camping trips as well. And one of the interesting pieces for us is to, or at least for me, having come to work at the Sheriff's Office in 1996, is to see the transition at the school. I'm finding out, or I'm hearing from Ryan Cox, the Assistant Principal, that graduation, graduation rates continue to increase at the school. Criminal behavior or adolescent behavior, negative adolescent behavior continues to decrease, and they're finding that students are coming to Shamala better prepared. So, it was this collaborative effort between the school and the Sheriff's Office, our Juvenile Department, the Bureau of Indian Education, is preparing students for their careers after high school, and then we're seeing these kids come in more prepared as they enter the school. I would want to, I'd like to point out, one of the deputies in particular, and that's Heath Nelson, so our relationship at the school is beneficial to the Sheriff's Office. Heath Nelson's one of our original deputies at the Shamala Indian School. He started as a patrol deputy, worked at the school for a number of years, transitioned over to Jeff Wood and parole and probation. And then, since then, Heath Nelson is now a supervisor, sergeant, over at parole and probation. So, it's one of those great experiences for us, that a deputy starts working patrol, moves to the school, then moves over to parole and probation, and now they're a supervisor, and they carry with them that decade-long experience for us. So, with that, thank you very much.
We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have questions, just a comment. I can remember when we were, I think out at Woodburn, we had a meeting there, and we had a whole room full of people that came in from the federal government, from Shamala Indian School, from, well, that is the federal government, but other federal agencies, and I think it was the federal, like the US Attorney's Office.
Yeah, US Attorney's Office.
Right, yeah. And then, County and Juvenile Department, Sheriff, and so on. And everyone was really excited about the opportunity and hopeful that it would work, and now it's kind of a much more laid-back presentation, but obviously, it's been working well, because they're continuing to contract with us. So, congratulate you for the work that you've done there, I think it's really important work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just thank you for what you do out there. Commissioner and I got to go out and see the peer court out there.
I was going to bring that up.
It was a great, great experience. I think it was last year at this time that somebody brought it up, and to see what those kids are doing, and how the peers, just from their experience, grow as a result of just being held accountable by each other, was really a good experience for us.
I have to make something fun of everything, I'm not going to, I enjoyed it.
Go ahead. How you hold me accountable, is that what you're going to say?
Yeah, I wanted to have a little peer court. All right. My one little question is, I can't see how it's- My one little question is, I, I can't see how it's progressed, the dollars themselves similar, up a little, what were they at? It's 457 is what's written.
Yeah, I'll let Eric talk a little bit about that. Obviously, the, the positions, we have three positions there, that's remained constant. But some of the funding is a little bit being recalculated by the federal government, and so I'll let him talk about that.
So the numbers did continue to increase. We were broaching $600,000 for a 12-month contract with, with the Indian School. We've come back to a nine-month calendar for them in order to keep the dollars at a manageable, manageable for the school.
I see, at what school's not there, we're not covering. Is that mostly correct?
That's mostly correct, sir. So we'll continue the relationship with them during the summer months.
Yeah.
The deputies have an office out there, so they'll continue to, to come in and out of the office, and we'll continue if they need us as needed basis. But when the students aren't there, then our deputies will be reassigned.
And we have plenty of use for them, I'll just say it that way, during the summer.
Yes, sir, we do.
Works nice. Okay. Could I then have a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve an agreement with the United States Bureau of Indian Education in the amount of $457,000 to provide law enforcement services through the Sheriff's Office and detention services through the Juvenile Department at the Chumala Indian School.
I'll second the motion.
I ask for a move and second it to approve the agreement with the United States Bureau of Indian Education for law enforcement services at Chumala Indian School. Further discussion? I hear none, therefore, call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there's a back page, and there may be, nope. That's all we have this morning, other than to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. Rather, a short schedule with a holiday this week. In fact, Monday is Labor Day, so there will be no operations here other than normal. On Tuesday, 8:30 to 9:00, calendar review in Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. That's followed at 9:15 by a work session having to do with accessory dwelling units, also in Silverton Conference Room. Next Wednesday at 9 o'clock, our next board session here in the Senator Hearing Room, and that's followed, I like this one, Wednesday at 12 o'clock to 1:00, Woodburn, Marion County, meeting at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn.
So also, I want to ask, because I didn't see it on there, we have, are we doing Juvenile Department interviews on Tuesday afternoon? We have a hold on the calendar, and it, so if we do, that would probably need to be noticed because we'll be together, even though. Right, yeah. Just wanted to make sure that that's.
If it happens, we'll make sure it gets out.
Right, but I don't think, it's a personnel thing, so it's not really a public meeting.
It wouldn't be a, but public meeting, there's no potential basis for it to be an executive session. Well, it's still a public meeting, but there might be a basis for an executive session. So we'll look and make sure it gets on the calendar and is appropriately noticed.
Yeah, okay. Right, I just think probably it never went from hold to actual because, as far as I know, we're doing the interviews on Tuesdays.
Oh, I don't know about it, so.
Oh, it's not, it's on everybody's calendar.
All right, fine. Okay, anything else this morning before we adjourn? I know we spent some time on it, but I am very concerned about fires. They're really just brewing and waiting for wind shifts, so.
Well, yeah, not, not only, Mr. Chair, not only the damage, the potential damage or the potential loss of property, but, you know, the, the whole economy up there, they had, they got the water this year.
I know, I thought of the same thing.
And it's just been the last three, four weeks, just dead fill from people going up there because of the smoke.
Pretty hard to want to play in that, isn't it?
Right. In fact, I was, I was just informed by somebody, just while we were sitting here, saying, hey, I don't think we're going to go up and spend the weekend because of the smoke. And those people go up there and support the jobs and the economy up there. So, yeah, it's kind of tragic. Hopefully, it'll stay at a Level One, right?
This is just my little wish list. You know, we improved the range of the radio station there, KYAC in Mill City, and one of the proposals would, for the future, was to add a repeater in the Detroit area. And I, I kind of think I wish we had that right now with what we're talking about this morning. I don't know where we go with it, but.
Well, while we were sitting here, I sent out that, that Level One notice, and Ken Cartwright actually announced it on the air. Yeah, he messaged me back and said he announced it on the air, so it's not, it's not reaching up into.
No, it just goes about to.
Brighton Bush.
To the dam itself, I think, and one more notch would, would fill in a gap. It's funny, I, I forget what we did, but I was up there waiting for others a week or two ago, before the eclipse anyway, and he was saying, no, this, this goes from myopole 13 to 56. I'm making numbers up, I wasn't quite sure whether, or 46. And I was listening to the station as I went, and it's coming in nice, 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 and right when you get to 46, it just stops. How do you know that? Hey, it's exactly where it ends. Anyway.
Well, I think they closed Highway 22 yesterday.
Yes.
Highway 20.
Coming up from Albany, yeah.
That'll impact 22 perhaps.
I just wanted to wish anybody who's listening a very happy Labor Day weekend. Hopefully, people will be safe and enjoy time with their families and.
Does it ever trouble you on Labor Day, we don't work? I don't know, it just never feels right.
No, it never troubles me, but I don't, I can honestly say I have never been bothered by that.
I've worked on Labor Days in my life, trust me.
All right. Well, let's not belabor the question, we'll call this meeting adjourned.